Carson City Planning Commission on the 25th of March 2015 at the Community Center in Carson City, Nevada. Ms. Clerk, would you be so kind as to take the role, please?
Chairperson Wendell.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Aswin.
Here.
Commissioner Castro. Commissioner Owens.
Here.
Commissioner Sadler.
Here.
Commissioner Steele.
Here.
O'Quams present.
Mr. Owens, would you please lead us in a place?
I would like to leave you the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we would like to welcome the public to this meeting, and I'd like to advise each and every one of you, the member of the public, that you are invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matter that is not, and I say is not, specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Is there any member of the public that has wants to address this subject matter at this time? Thank you very much. Gentlemen, you have a copy of the minutes in front of you. If you've all had an opportunity to review them, if there's been no comments or any questions, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Motion made by Mr. Sadler to accept the minutes as prepared. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Aswin. Are Mr. Aswin all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any ayes? Motion carried. Thank you. Mr. Plummel, is there any modification of the agenda?
No modifications.
All right, sir. Thank you. Would any member of the Commission wish at this time to explain the contact with an applicant or the public regarding an item on the agenda or business of the Commission? Let it be noted on the record that no Commission member wishes to address that issue. Public hearing matters. F1, SUP-15-011, to consider requests from Nevada Energy, property owner, Sierra Pacific Power Company, DBA Nevada Energy, to modify special use permit U-99/00-17 to allow construction and operation of a new monopole with an overall height of 93 feet on property zone single-family 6,000 SF6 located on Emerson Drive, APN 002-751-08. Ms. Pansky.
I'll take care of this one. Kathy Green wrote the staff report that's provided in your packet for the record, Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. I'll give the brief presentation on this application, which, as you said, is a special use permit for the construction of a, it's a, the monopole is an antenna with an overall height of 90 feet on an, in an existing substation facility. I also want to note, so you have your staff report, you also have a packet of late material. So just, just to note with that, there was some references to some of that material in there that has FAA approval included as it. It also has some public notification that to surrounding property owners that went with, with past approvals on this property, just evidence of that, that's included in there. And also in your, in the packet that you did get, there's some additional extraneous materials related to the project that are in the back that weren't necess, that aren't, not bad that they're in there, but there's just some extra things that probably didn't need to be in there, but if you have questions on those, we'll, we'll answer them. That's, that's no problem. But you do have some late material. Just quickly going through the site that we're talking about, this is the Emerson Substation, north of College Parkway and east of Emerson, out highlighted in blue on the, on the map up there. Here's the existing conditions up there. This is on a, surrounded by a vacant property next to the freeway, fenced-in yard. The aerial photo zooming in there, so with the freeway to the north on this top of the page, top of the photo here, the proposed antenna will be in the kind of the south or southeast corner of the property, and in plan view, that, that looks like this. So we have the facility looking at the, so this would be looking from generally, we'll call it, call it the west side of the facility with the freeway running to the, to the left. There are existing power poles up there, and then the new antenna with the additional height for which the special use permit is required is this facility right here. So it's, and it's an antenna, it's not a, it's not a communications facility per se, per our code, like for telecommunications where there's going to be share, requiring shared access onto it for, for telephone service. This is a telemetry type of antenna used strictly for Sierra, Nevada Energy, and I understand it's part of their remote meter reading program. So it has to do with that, and hopefully the, the applicants and the audience can, can talk to you more about that. And this is the final slide in the presentation, just showing a little more detail on the pole, so I'll go back to the aerial here. But we, we sent out notices to surrounding property owners within 300 feet of this. To date, we have received no, no comments from any, any surrounding property owners, either in favor or in an opposition. As I noted, there is approval from the Airport Authority and FAA for this facility, so they've gone through that review, and staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report.
Thank you, sir. Can we show any question, Mr. Plummel, regarding this application at this time? All right, we'd like to call forward the representative for the company.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. My name is Mark Sullivan, and I work with NV Energy. I'm a land use advisor with them, and I did submit the application. I finally caught up with Paul, I was supposed to come see him today, about some of these very similar type facilities, and I'd just been running behind all day, and actually one of the items I'm going to talk to you about, too, is I got to Kathy Green a little late today about, and I had a question for her about the application, one of the conditions. But like I said, I sent it to her so late in the day, I think 3:30 or 4 o'clock in the afternoon, so unfair to even expect a response. But as Lee had said, this is part of our NV Energize project, it's a statewide project. Actually, we anticipate statewide, we're going to save approximately $25 million that we can pass through to the ratepayers from not being, having truck rolls to go out and fix problems, but we can identify those problems remotely and actually open things up and move power around, and it's going out and reading meters. I mean, there's a lot of advantages to the automation that's provided through this. So I think staff did a very thorough examination of the, of the proposal, and certainly the analysis is on target. I mean, we agree with the staff's recommendation. The only question that I did have is, this is, it's part of a metering program, and there's actually the program that you guys have adopted, the 2012 IBC code, there's actually exempted for exemption in the code, off the top of my head, I don't know, it's like 105.2.3, I believe, and it talks about metering, transmission, distribution, metering, those types of things we don't need to get a building permit for, and one of the conditions is a building permit. So we'd like you guys to at least look at that, and, and I don't know, maybe it's the building department that can, you know, they can waive it, but we've been getting exemptions in other entities that have adopted the same code, or even previous year codes, this isn't a new exemption. But there's probably nobody in the state that I know of that has more experience with direct buried poles than the power company. We have them all over the place, we've done a ton of them, and, and the last place we're going to put a pole where we think it might fall over is in a substation where it's going to hit electrical equipment. So we're pretty good at keeping them standing erect, so I think you can have confidence in this, that we'll be able to continue that with this project. Other than that, I don't have any other comments. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yes, sir, I have some questions. You listened to the testimony, Mr. Plummel, and you indicated that you understood all that, and do you have, you've had an opportunity to peruse the recommendations, the recommended conditions of approval, and do you agree with every one of those?
Well, with the exception that I mentioned.
Which one? Would you repeat that again?
Number four, the building permit.
Okay. Is there any comment from Mr. Plummel regarding that matter?
Sure. I can note for the record, if, if Mr. Sullivan's comfortable with it, that in any, so if there's any exemptions per the building code, we'll follow the building code and any exemptions, and if there are, then a permit would apply. This would be, this is a standard condition of approval, so we'll apply any, any applicable code or exemptions thereto if he's satisfied with that, I'll note that for the record.
All right, sir, thank you. Any members of the Commission have any questions? Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, I would have one question for you. Is there a possibility of any dishes or anything else being attached to that, or is it just going to be the one antenna?
Yeah, we don't have any plans to put anything else on there. Certainly, these are proprietary facilities, as, as Mr. Plummel mentioned, we, it's inside a substation, we won't co-locate on it because of the danger of, you know, people going inside of a substation, that's for, you know, train personnel only and of our company. So I, we don't see, I don't have any plans for it, and you're going to get another crack at me if I come back and want to put a dish on there, so you'll, you'll definitely see that application if, if that were to happen, but we don't have any plans to.
Do you have an approximate distance of that monopole from the freeway?
Boy, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's probably...
Just approximately, sir.
Oh, several hundred yards.
And then how, how high would you say the pole's going to be above that, the highest point of the freeway, including the wall?
Oh, you know, I don't know what the, if I'm guessing, I'm going to guess the freeway's 15, 20 feet high, does that sound about right? So if you got 90 feet, you got about 70 feet, which there's a, actually one closer there, actually the getaway that comes across the freeway to carry the freeway is 85 feet high to give you some, so this is going to be, and actually, the, the pole itself is, you're going to only end up with, I believe it's an 83-foot pole, you have a 10-foot whip antenna, which is probably similar to the diameter of this.
Probably won't even see that, right?
Yeah, it won't have a bulb on the end of it, so it's going to be similar to the other facilities that we have out there.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Betcha.
Gentlemen, have any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Would any member of the public like to come forward and address this application? Let it be noted for the record that there's no indication for the public to come forward and address this issue, and we'll bring it back to the Commission for a motion. Questions, comments, discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Sadler, you have a motion?
I'll make a most, recommend a motion. I move to approve SUP-15-011, a request to modify special use permit U-99/00-17 to allow construction and operation of a new monopole and antenna with an overall height of 93 feet on property zone single-family 6,000 located on Emerson Drive, APN 002-751-08, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report. Do I have to make a notice of the exception of the one, number four, if applicable?
So noted. Thank you, Mr. Sadler. Motion made by Mr. Sadler to approve this application.
I'll second that.
We second, Mr. Aswin. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any ayes? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Next item on the agenda, F-2, SUP-15-010, to consider requests from the Nevada Rural Housing Authority, property owner, Fish Emergency Referral Services, to allow multifamily apartments of property on property zoned, retail commercial RC located at 430 Janelle Drive, APN 001-032-34. Ms. Pansky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Susan Dor Pansky, Planning Manager. This is a request from the Nevada Rural Housing Authority to locate multifamily apartments in a retail commercial zoning district. Any residential use in a retail commercial district requires a special use permit, which is why we're here in front of you with this application today. The site is located on Janelle Drive on the north side. It's actually a site that has current buildings on the property today, but the applicant's proposing to demolish those and construct the multifamily project that they're proposing. Just a couple of photos of what the buildings on this site look like now, and they've been, I believe, vacant for quite some time. And then this is the proposed site plan. So in the staff report, I've kind of given a summary of what Nevada Rural Housing Authority is proposing in partnership, I should mention, with Fish, who owns the property currently. The, they are proposing to provide 39 one-bedroom multifamily units, and these would be for the purpose of providing permanent affordable supportive housing for homeless individuals as well as very low-income individuals, essentially meant to be a transitional-type housing for them to get out of the homeless state that they're in. We don't currently have a project like that in Carson City, this is the first one, and that's what they're proposing today. So the site plan that I have up right now basically shows in the gray area the mass of the building that would be on the site, and then the parking surrounding it with the circulation going around the building from the east side of the property off of Janelle Drive to the west side. They have provided quite a bit of landscaping and open space areas. It's a two-story building, and I'll go to the elevation so you can kind of take a look at what it's proposed to look like. Proposed to be a combination of stucco and lap siding with vinyl windows, fairly typical of multifamily projects that you would see throughout Carson City. And that's, this is actually just the Janelle Drive side that we're looking at right here. But then in the next slide, all of the elevations are shown, so you can kind of see what it would look like from all sides. The south elevation, which is the one on the top, would be the Janelle Drive, the one that you would see from the adjacent right-of-way. And again, all one-bedroom units, 39 of them in total, two-story building. They actually have also proposed several common areas, not only on the outside of the building, but also on the inside, a kitchen area, library. And then most notably, they have an on-the, on-the-job training facility that they're proposing actually, on the ground floor plan, you can see it here on the left, I'm sorry, on the right. So that's about 3,000 square feet, and it's essentially there to provide some job training opportunities for the people that are living in the facility, where they don't have to go off-site too far in order to receive that training, so that's a, a nice addition for this type of project. That's actually all I have in the slides, so I'm going to go back to the site plan real quick, so we can talk about just a few things that we're noting for changes that have been requested most, notably is the amount of parking. So Carson City Code requires two units, or two spaces per residential unit. The applicant is requesting a reduction to 1.2 spaces per unit for this project, and, and for the most part, well, for two reasons, actually. One, the Institute of Transportation Engineers manual supports a reduction in traffic from, in parking from the two units, two spaces per unit. But also because of the type of project that they're proposing, because it is supportive housing for low-income individuals, the likelihood that the majority of the people would own cars in this facility is, is probably not very high, so to have two spaces per unit is really an excess. So while we don't have a reduction in parking for affordable housing currently in our code, other surrounding jurisdictions do, namely Reno and Sparks, they had provided us with documentation from those jurisdictions showing the reductions that they allow. We have made the determination that it would be appropriate, given the type of project that they're proposing, to have that reduction as well. But I will note that we put conditions of approval in the project, the recommended conditions, that state that this would need to remain an affordable housing project in order for us to allow the exemption. So what the applicant has told us is that under their housing funding that they're pursuing for this project, they would have to record a deed restriction essentially, or some document similar to that, to make sure that it remains affordable housing for a timeframe of about 50 years. So after that 50 years is done, there's a possibility that it could go to a regular multifamily. So while, you know, we can't see in the future, and maybe people won't even be driving cars by then, they'll be flying them, who knows? We put a condition in that said that if it, if it changes, then the parking needs to be revisited. Yeah, so. That's really the, the most notable thing. They meet all of the standards for residential development in non-residential districts, and I've outlined that in the staff report. And just so that, just to note for the record, multifamily and residential in the commercial zoning district, it requires a certain amount of open space per unit, and that number is 250 square feet that's required. But the applicant, in all of the green space that you see here, and some of it can be counted, mostly the stuff back in the back here, some of it can be counted, some of it can't because it's relatively narrow, but the areas that can be counted well exceed the requirement of 250 square feet at an average of 420 square feet per unit. So they're providing quite a bit of open space and usable open space, as well, as you'll see on the site plan, there's a gardening area, an outdoor pet area, benches and seating, bike racks and things like that. Staff's recommending approval with the conditions that we have outlined in the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Sadler, you have a question, Ms. Pansky?
Yes, in the event overflow parking were needed, would it fall onto the streets in the area? Or for example, could they go up on that top end where they have some parking spaces and possibly utilize where that's planted up in that area to add parking if they had to?
They could potentially add parking in that area. And one thing I didn't note, but I did note in, in the staff report, there is a possibility of a second phase at some point in the future, but they don't really have a good indication of when that will happen or if it will happen. In the meantime, for this current phase, the 39 units, if they needed additional parking, then yes, they could definitely add parking in this, this area here.
That's what I thought of, that top area up there would be the most likely place, but you gain another 15 or 20 spots maybe if they needed them.
Right, correct.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Ms. Pansky? There being no further questions, we'd like to invite the individual representing this application to come forward, and if you'd be so kind as to identify yourself with the record, please. And are you going to have him sign in or anything? No?
I can sign a little form later on if you want.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we're good, thank you.
Yes, would you identify yourself?
Yes, my name is Steve Harriman, I'm the architect on the project.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Harriman.
Harriman?
Like Avril Harriman.
All right, sir, thank you.
Anyway, not that we're related. Before I get started, a few people in the audience, I just want to introduce real quickly. Jim Peckham and Laura Bagwell from Fish, Eddie Holt from NRHA, Eric Novak from Praxis, Lisa Dayton from, Lisa Dayton. And I'll give you just a real brief description, because Susan went through, kind of took the wind out of my sails as far as what I was going to present, and I did a great job, so thank you very much. Do you have a little mouse or something I can point around with?
I don't, but I can tell you where, if you want me to...
Okay, no, just, I want you to just leave it on the site plan for now. Thought I'd just make a couple of points here and then open it up if you have any questions and that kind of thing. The orientation of the building was such, we wanted to bring it forward on the site, opposite of really what's there now, in order to screen the parking and in order to create a, a really significant outdoor private landscape area, recreational area for the users. The, some of the amenities that we're going to have on the outside of the building, Susan mentioned, but, you know, an outdoor pet area, dog park, if you will, I think it's going to be a real benefit, a lot of the users or the residents here will, will have pets, it's a real important part of their life. Gardening plots, again, it's a pretty significant area, and we're hoping that it's going to get a lot of good use as well as bike racks, a lot of our residents are going to be riding bikes rather than driving cars, so we have quite a few bike racks out there. Patio areas that are just in front of you, a little hard to tell there, but there's that little red arrow with the double doors opening up, that's our, our large multipurpose room that's sized to be able to house everybody that's in the facility indoors, but we wanted to have a large picnic area just outside of that there, so if they have some, you know, larger social events, nice weather, that kind of thing, they can open it up and really get some good interaction going there. There's a bit of a, kind of a dual entry, if you will, with our on-the-job training area on the top of the building, kind of a secondary entry into the facility there, and an area where we can have deliveries, they'll be bringing in different types of, oh, furniture or things like that that residents can work on, you know, part of the on-the-job training process. As far as the floor plans go, if you could flip over to that momentarily, there they are. A little hard to, to see it, but some of the indoor amenities that we have is the large multipurpose space with the kitchen in it, computer rooms, exercise rooms, library, there's a wellness room, it's basically kind of like an exam room, potentially doctors or other service providers in the area can come by there and, and do some counseling or exams, that kind of a thing. Tried to create some areas, little, kind of small-scale intimate blockout areas within the facility, the one directly over the entry on the second floor, just, it's going to be a really nice sitting area where, you know, people can get together, socialize a little bit on a, on a small scale rather than a large multipurpose room. Tried to create some interest in the exterior elevations, by the way, we've juxtaposed some of the units, created some white spots in the corridors, create some interest in those areas, but also creates, you know, transfers through into the exterior of the building to create some articulation and break up the massing. As far as the exterior elevations go, wanted to, you know, again, create a lot of interest in the building, so we've introduced two different primary building materials, stucco on the, on the lower floor, a little easier to keep clean and maintenance-wise, and then lap siding, a hardy plank-type siding on the upper floor to create a little more texture and, and interest. We have some awning elements over some of the windows, create some shadow patterns on the walls, and then we're introducing, I think it's four different colors on the exterior of the building, you'd have to sit down by the elevation and count them up. But again, just to create some interest and, and really articulate the building as much as we could. I think with that, I'd just open it up if you have any questions.
I have a few questions. One, you've read the document that prepared by the city, and you're familiar with the conditions of approval?
They're fine, yes, no problems.
You agree with every one of those?
Yep.
All right, sir. I'd like to open up the Commission to ask Mr. Herriman any question. Mr. Sadler?
And something I think is badly needed in this community, I, it's a good thing to see, and I think I read where rent would be based on ability-to-pay kind of income and that sort of thing of the people that are living there.
It is, Eric Novak could address the affordability aspects of it, but as I understand, and Eric will jump up if I get too far off base here, but I believe the rent is limited to 30% of their income, and the income is either pegged at 30% of median or possibly 50%. I wasn't sure if it was all 30% of median.
Yeah. If you'd, just identify yourself for the record.
Eric Novak from Praxis Consulting Group, and I'm a consultant to Nevada Rural Housing Authority.
Thank you.
And this will be a low-income apartment building, all the units will be affordable to residents below 50% of median income, and then, and for a family, for, and they're all one-bedroom, small one-bedroom units. for a family, for, and they're all one-bedroom, small one-bedroom units. And our assumption is that every, most residents will be single individuals. There may be some couples, but mostly single individuals. So that 50% of median income in Carson City is $23,600. So all the residents will be below that income level. But many, but we're also applying for rental assistance. If we get that, then we'll be able to serve very, extremely low-income residents down to zero income because they'll just pay as a percentage of their income.
Thank you.
All right, sir.
And it's, I should say that this is the first tax credit project of its kind in Nevada that's permanent supportive housing for homeless individuals. So we, for the whole state, and so it's really a great partnership between FISH and NRHA.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Harriman? Or just gentlemen?
Yeah.
Okay, excuse me.
In considering it's being transitional housing, is there going to be a timeframe where these residents can stay?
It'll be actually permanent.
It will be permanent housing?
Yeah, and I think the expectation is, and others here, Jim Peckham and others could describe this, but our hope is that people will graduate from this housing into other housing in the community, and that it's, and the expectation that some, that if they're, if someone is physically disabled and very low income, they may not, this may be where they live, but for others who, you know, they get a job and at some point they decide they don't want to live here and will move elsewhere, but there won't be a time limit on the stay.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, the commission, these two gentlemen?
I have a question. Who will manage the facility?
So the named manager right now is West State's Property Management out of Alco, and they manage all of Nevada Rural Housing Authority's properties. But we're also partnering with a lot of service agencies who'll be providing the services on the site. So West State's will be more of the real estate property manager, collecting the rent, doing all the compliance. But there'll be other service providers, including FISH, that'll be providing services on the site.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll open it up to the public to come forward and address this application. Would any member of the public like to come forward, identify yourself with the record, and give us a speech? No? Thank you. We'll bring it back to the commission.
Make a motion.
All right, we're ready for motion.
Yeah, just for planning.
Go ahead.
Just for clarification, the previous use of this location, the site?
Previous use was offices and warehouse space.
Office and warehouse?
But it's retail commercial is the zoning.
Okay. And how many have you seen? I always ask you this question. Let's say in the past five years, retail commercial to multifamily?
Half a dozen.
Half a dozen, okay. All right, thank you.
If you could see this area, you would understand it's a blight to the community. And this is, this is not only to be an asset, but a contribution of the quality of life in Carson. I really believe that.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, Mr. Steele.
I have another question. Susan, was this originally built as a retail commercial facility, or was, it looks like it might have been a motel or some sort of apartments?
Offices.
Have they always been offices?
I think always been offices, yeah. I don't know that it's always been retail commercial zoning there, but always been some form of offices.
Okay, thank you.
It's just terribly concise.
All right, Mr. Steele.
Yes, I move to approve SUP-15-010, a special use permit request from Nevada Rural Housing Authority, property owner FISH, emergency referral services to allow multifamily apartments on property zone retail commercial located at 430 Janelle Drive, APN 001-032-34, based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the staff report.
We have a motion by Mr. Steele for approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Sadler. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any ayes? Motion carried. Gentlemen, let me just say, in this particular application, it's definitely going to be an asset for the community, and all those involved should be congratulated.
Yes, thank you.
FYI, it was originally built for the state welfare offices.
Yes.
Exactly. Oh, and Nevada Division of Investigations.
Right.
And state wealth, yeah, state welfare. Next item on the agenda, F-3, SUP-15-003, to consider request from Tahoe Hydrophonics, property owner DRF Living Trust, to allow a medical marijuana cultivation facility on property zone, General Industrial, located at 1588 Old Hot Springs Road, APN 008-123-23. Ms. Pansky?
Danny was just pointing out that there's potentially a typo in the owner. It's DRL Living Trust, but it's correct in the motion, so.
All right, thank you.
Just something to note for the record.
Okay, thank you.
So this is a request for a medical marijuana cultivation facility at 1588 Old Hot Springs Road. You remember, you recently heard a zone change and master plan amendment for this parcel from tourist commercial to general, to general industrial. The applicant is proposing to locate their cultivation facility in the building that is currently located on the property, and you can see in this area here where that building is. It's in the upper northwest corner. It's an existing warehouse building that is basically just at the very northern property line. It's about 5,000 square feet. The applicant is proposing to occupy all of it. It's got two floors inside, I believe. If not, they'll be building a second partial floor to accommodate their operations, but they can clarify that for you. Just some photos of what the property looks like today from Old Hot Springs Road. It is located adjacent to the Hot Springs Resort, but I'll note that there's nothing in the Hot Springs Resort that would preclude the medical marijuana cultivation from going in this location. There's no childcare facility or, it doesn't meet the criteria of a public facility or a school or anything like that. So they are able to locate here. I do want to note, though, for the record, that as we move over to the site plan that's up on the screen now, there is a church in the vicinity. And the church is actually located at Research Way in Old Hot Springs, or basically right in this location here. That does not impact the current proposal that's before you today, because the requirement is that the front door of the facility be 300 feet away. So this current facility meets that. However, if the applicant wanted to expand at any point in the future, they would need to make sure that they continue to meet that 300-foot criteria from the, basically the front door of this building, and I just quickly measured it a couple days ago, over to roughly right in this area is about 350, 360 feet. So just something to note, it doesn't impact, though, what you're looking at today. This is the site plan that was provided by the applicant. As I mentioned, they are proposing to utilize the existing building for their operations. The, probably the most notable things on this site plan and the two items that are the most significant in our recommended conditions are related to landscaping and roads. So the current access to this site is this area here that I'm pointing out on this slide. This is dirt access to the facility. There is a requirement that it be paved, and the applicant is aware of that. We've had several discussions about that. And then in addition to that, just so that we can continue to maintain our intention of dignified and professional facilities, we are going to require that the applicant do some landscaping along the frontage. This is not going to be in compliance fully with the landscape standards, but it doesn't have to be because they're not proposing an expansion at this time. What we're proposing is a 10-foot strip along the frontage of this entire property so that they can kind of spruce it up a little bit. Just another picture of the site plan. This is actually showing it closer up to the building itself, what it's going to look like, the parking area that'll be located on the west side. There is paving in this area now, from what I understand. The parking spaces, I don't believe, are striped, but we will require them to not only make sure that the paving is adequate as a part of the conditions, but also to stripe appropriately for the amount of parking that they need. Some elevations of the current building, and again, they're not proposing any changes. And then the floor plan. And as I had mentioned, this is a cultivation facility only, so there'll just be growing product in this facility. On the top part of the screen is the first floor with vegetation, vegetation room, three grow rooms, a, I'm sorry, I can't read that. I think it's another vegetation room. And then they have a drying room as well. And then upstairs, there's some dry rooms and some possibly future production area, but that would fall under another special use permit should they get a state application at some point in the future. Right now, they're just asking for cultivation. I think that's it. They meet all of the development standards, either currently or with the proposed conditions of approval, and we are recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Pansky. Mr. Sadler, you have a question?
Yes, under the discussion, it mentions the applicant has provided minimal information on security. Will that be further addressed before this is done, or are you comfortable with the security that they're offering? I mean, it just, it doesn't go into much detail or anything like the others have in the past.
It doesn't go into much detail, but we don't really have a specific requirement for them to do that. We ask them to provide as much as they can. They've satisfied to my liking, at least, so that I can understand that they're going to have the cameras and video monitoring and everything like that. They weren't as detailed as the other applicants have been in the past, so.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Ms. Pansky?
Is security, is security a requirement for their state permit?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions, Ms. Pansky? There being none, we'll invite the applicant or his representative to come forward and address this application. Good afternoon, sir. If you'd identify yourself.
Good evening, yeah. Mark Bruno, and I'll be representing and do my best today. We're missing one of the members that was in part writing majority of this application today. I'm an operational guy or an operations guy at the facility, so any questions that are pertaining to that, and I'll do my best on any other questions that you guys may have in regards to security or whatever it might be at that point.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bruno. You heard the statements regarding this application that were made by Ms. Pansky?
Correct.
And do you have any objection? Do you agree with all that?
Yeah, no, absolutely. We've met with her on a one-off situation, both myself and Ray, and we discussed things of the road, the landscaping, and then if we do need to stripe, which I believe we do at the top area, striping in the parking lot itself. So we're aware of all those necessary requirements at this point.
Okay, and then you're acknowledging the fact that you're familiar with all of the conditions of approval?
Yes.
And you agree with them?
Absolutely, without a doubt.
All right, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, wonderful. No other questions?
Yes, just a moment, please.
Okay.
All right. In addition to what Ms. Pansky has provided, do you wish to provide any other testimony or welcome to?
No, I mean, at this point, she did a good overview. I mean, essentially, one of the things in question was, again, the road, and then the big deal for me, or at least today's purposes, was to find out if there were any questions in regards to how the internal operations or anything of that nature need to be dealt with. Other than that, I think we've handled or covered all those bases at this point.
All right, sir.
Yeah.
Would any commission members like to have, like to question? Go ahead, sir. Mr. Steele?
Yes, I do have one question, Chairman.
Yes.
And Susan, this may apply to you or to you as well. I guess when we were talking back on the public swimming pool and the churches and the schools, Hot Springs's pool is not considered a public pool?
No, it's a private facility.
It's a private facility?
Yep.
Okay, because that just came into my mind when I was just thinking about that, when you, the public pool. Okay, that answered my question with that. Thank you.
Any, are there any other questions of this gentleman? Mr. Sadler?
I brought up the security, but also right below that, it mentions the odor control, and yours will all be up to standard for state.
Yeah, yeah, so we're going to be using large CFM circulation in there, a bunch of charcoal filter. We're also going to be doing in the build design, which you guys will see in the building department, unlike maybe most folks in the industry, especially with me having prior knowledge in the California marketplace, we're going to be double litting, both an interior lid and exterior lid of all the internal build-out that's going to be taking place, which also helps securitize that. And also, what it does is it locks that odor within the TGI compound or the TGI build-out, which is about an 18-inch section within the roof or the ceiling of that build-out. So, yeah, so it's going to be definitely held with. We knew the big issue's going to be the odor, and we've made necessary steps to make sure we handled that accordingly, so.
Thank you.
All right, sir, thank you. Would you please explain to us what you are going to do about security?
Yeah, so security-wise, the one, the one issue, and on the state application, I believe it was, and maybe Ray can point to this too, but I believe on the state application it was much more in-depth. What we were trying to do is this becomes more of a public situation, just because security or anyone on the outside understanding how the security would work could be detrimental for interior problems, so to speak. So at this point, we are definitely running a camera system, surveillance, closed circuit system, also that'll be tied into like an ADT monitoring system as well. Fencing is another thing that we had talked about doing, which is a six-foot fence, angle, angle iron, three-strand barbed wire around the property to secure it in addition to. And then also making pull-through slots for both door openings, so not only are they a regular door open, but there's also metal binding slots that would actually deter anyone from opening from the outside of the building itself, so.
All right, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. Sadler?
And you already have received your state approval for the.
That's correct. Yeah, absolutely.
Just to clarify.
Yeah.
All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay, wonderful. Any other questions or?
It doesn't appear we do. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, guys.
Let us open up to the public to come forward and address this application if you so desire.
Can I just add something to my, real quick? Can I just add something to my statement real quick? So on the, I just wanted to expand on the Hot Springs facility. So not only is it a private facility, but it's a private facility that isn't solely for the, intended for the use of children. Because there are situations under the requirements in the state that if it's a private facility that's for children, it could fall under that definition, but if it's not for the main purposes of serving children for recreational opportunities, then it wouldn't apply. So I just wanted to expand on that. It's not just because it's private.
All right, ma'am, thank you.
And I'd like to, my name is Daniel Spence. I represent the Hot Springs today. I'd like to touch in on that because I think we disagree strongly on your interpretation of that. The interest states in Section 7, I'll give you the full interest, actually, the interest for 453A .322. Under Section 7, it does list things like the daycare, the public park, things of that nature, including a public swimming pool, which the public does have access to the swimming pool, although it is privately owned. In Section E, it says a center or facility, the primary purpose of which is to provide recreational opportunities or service to children, adolescents. And that is exactly what the Hot Springs does. We encourage families, children. If you look at all the billboards we have in town, all the billboard show children swimming in the pool. This is a location that is one of the oldest businesses in this area. It's been around since 1859, I believe. Let me give you the exact date. Yeah, 1859. It's a historic, Nevada's historic society is marked it, it's labeled in there. This is a place that gets 150 visitors, many of which are children. And this isn't, this location isn't close. It is literally touching the, I mean, the swimming pool, I could physically throw a softball and hit that building, right where the kids would be swimming. And the Hot Springs opposes this completely. They feel like they've had this business here, the owners, current owners have had it for just about 11 years, but it's been here since Virginia City's days. People have all come here. People come from out of state to see this place. And to have barbed-wired fences and all this compound right next to where our historic Hot Springs are, one of the hallmarks of our city, the Carson Hot Springs, is just, doesn't make sense. There's other really great locations that would be away from the public eye where this marijuana could be grown. We're not opposed to the growing of marijuana. We just don't think it needs to be right where all of our public gather.
Your name again, sir?
Daniel Spence.
Spence?
Spence, S-P-E-N-C-E.
Ms. Pansky, do you want to address that?
Could you just read that, the definition E again for me?
Yes. A city or facility, the primary purpose of. A city or facility, the primary purpose of which is to provide recreational opportunities or service to children or adolescents.
Thank you. So staff's interpretation of that would be that this facility's primary purpose is not to provide recreational opportunities to children. That's the way that we interpret that.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Pansky. Mr. Sadler, do you have questions? This gentleman?
What percentage of children? I mean, of your people that come in there, how often, how many children, say, in a day or in a week or whatever, come through there?
Well, we average about 150 people per day total, of which I would have to give you my best guesstimate. But I am intimately aware. I've been to the Hot Springs many times. I am very familiar with how things go, so my guess would be fairly accurate, I would imagine. But it's not perfect, so I want you to know that. I would say probably at least a third. Many times, there's, it's families. We do get quite a few seniors in the mornings, so that would make the numbers not quite. But pretty much after the morning rush, it's mostly families. And from baby babies all the way up.
Okay. Any other questions? So the bottom line, is this a public or a private facility?
Well, it's a private facility available to the public as it has been for over 100 years. I mean, it is privately owned, but we don't have a special roster of people that can come. Or it's not invitation-only. It's available, just like any of our Carson Pool is a public swimming pool. I can go there. I have to pay to go in. I don't get to walk in for free. It's the same thing.
For the edification of the commission, Ms. Pansky or Mr. Plummel, could you elaborate a little more on the subject matter?
As I had mentioned previously, it being private doesn't exclude it. It can be a private facility, but it needs to be a private facility whose primary purpose is to provide recreational opportunities for children.
Thank you, Ms. Pansky.
That's the way that the state's definition is. So because of the multiple uses on this site, our interpretation is that it's not the primary purpose.
Thank you for that clarification.
And in regard, if you don't mind, that it is, in fact, our primary purpose. We do have other things there, but the resort, the Hot Springs itself, hence the Carson Hot Springs, that is our main product. We do have a restaurant that rents some space there that just recently opened up. Sasserfras has relocated there. But that's not our business is renting to Sasserfras. I mean, our business is the pool, the swimming pool. That's it. That's our... And we do sell some sundries, but that's not our... We're not there to be a 7-Eleven. We provide sundries to the pool. People would like to get a snack while they're swimming. Our primary sale, our primary goal, is to provide that pool, which, of course, is drained and filled every day with the Hot Springs water. And it takes about 100 years, they say, from every time it's drained to come back.
What is the actual distance from your facility to this particular facility in question?
If you look at that map, you see the blue pool?
Here's the pool.
Uh-huh. That's the swimming pool. The blue line would be that...
I can't throw a ball that far.
I could throw a ball that far. Well, not to the building. I mean, to the property line, which is right where it's at.
So what's the distance for the record?
I would have to measure, but it's definitely within 300 feet.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Sadler, do you have a question?
Have you met with the applicants or discussed this situation with them at all?
I have not. I was recently brought on, when I was made aware of this, by the owners of the Hot Springs. And they asked me to take a look at the NRS because they wanted to see if there was any statutory reasons. And after I read through it, I said, "Well, the law is definitely on your side." But in lieu of that, it also just doesn't make sense as a location. Additionally to that, the Hot Springs itself is contemplating expanding at some point. I can't promise a date or when. And that would be the most likely place to purchase the land. And should they ever purchase that land, they would stop all cultivation, obviously. So it would kind of make the permit not really that valid. It would be very temporary. And to that regard, we have the first right of refusal to that land. So if it is for sale, we have the first right to buy it.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Mr. Spence, by any commission member? Mr. Owens?
Yeah. The... As you said, the Sasserfras has just opened up there. And if I'm not mistaken, they have a bar and they serve alcohol. Do you have a problem with that around your children?
No, the children are barred by the state to drink alcohol, so we don't deal with that. But that's...
Barred by the state to smoke marijuana, too.
Right. But the point is, is we don't want them right where it's growing because of the security issues, things like that. Again, the fencing and the security and the potential danger right so close to where the families just come daily and have been for 150 years.
Mr. Eswin, do you have a question?
Not for Mr. Spence, for staff. The NRS 453A spells out where a facility can be located. Correct? And the state reviews their permit based upon the requirements of the NRS and the administrative code. So they've already reviewed and made a determination upon, on the nature of the Hot Springs business?
We can't confirm what their review process involves, but they have issued a provisional certificate.
Okay. You have a question, Mr. Spence? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Spence. Can we have the applicant come forward again, please?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spence.
Who wants to speak first? Somebody?
This is Richard Langston, too, who's one of the partners, too, and has owned the property there for some time. So I just wanted to bring him up as well, just in case there's any questions in regards to the property itself.
Based on the location of the Hot Springs?
Correct.
As well as the location of this proposed facility, has this matter been presented to the state with regard to your application? Has there been any discussion at all with the state?
Yeah, so I believe on the state application itself, too, they were aware of, obviously, the location. The location was on the state application. Again, not knowing their exact process, I'm sure that they've done their due diligence as far as that particular property's concerned or surrounding properties, and then made the recommendation for the permit at that point or the provisional permit.
And they approved your certificate?
That's correct.
Under the circumstances?
Absolutely. Yeah.
All right. Any commission member have any questions? This gentleman or... All right. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Langston, right?
Yes.
All right, sir. Please, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I was up before you not too long ago. And it's kind of interesting to me. I'm sitting back here. The Langston family is really behind the project. And we have my family and my brothers have property around it. And of course, I own the property we're talking about. So we're in favor of the project. This is the first thing I've heard from Mr. Spence, that there's any opposition. I've talked to the manager of the Hot Springs on numerous occasions, and there's never been any negative discussion. So this is like a surprise deal to me. But we... Our family ran the Hot Springs for 60 years, so I think I'm pretty well qualified to tell you what the situation is out there. And the thing that strikes me is not really of importance because of children, is that the fact that there's three walls between the Hot Springs pools and the property. And they all back, really turn their back to our property. There's even a fence where they can't walk in and see the property. And so I don't understand really what he's talking about. There's always been alcohol and dance halls, and it's always been a kind of an interesting reputation of the place, as we all know. And so I don't see any problem with the children. They're well-supervised, number one, when they're out there. There's no place for children to walk outside and view even a fence, the fencing he was talking about. The Hot Springs totally backs up to my property. Even the dance hall, there's a couple, two or three walls between the property and the restaurant. So it's not like it's an open field and people are out there picnicking or anything like that. The children don't even see the property, frankly. So I would love your questions that you have. And I ran the Hot Springs myself for 30 years, so I try to answer them if I can.
Any question, Mr. Langston? Thank you, Mr. Langston.
All right.
Appreciate your input, sir. Would any member of the public wish, like to come forward, address this application? Anyone else, for instance? All right. We'll bring it back to the commission for questions, comments, further discussion, or motion.
Just a comment.
Sure.
Basically, we're just, we're here to decide whether it can legally go there. And the state has already approved it to go there. I mean, that's what we're charged with tonight, correct? As far as I'm concerned. Okay. So that's where we are. It will then go to the supervisors and be handled by the supervisors.
No, this is it.
No, it doesn't? This is it?
This is it.
Oh, okay.
Final decision. The buck stops here.
You'll wait.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All right. I'm prepared to receive a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Owens?
I move to approve SUP 15-003, a special use permit request from Tahoe Hydroponics LLC, property owner DRL Living Trust, to allow a medical marijuana cultivation facility on property zone general industrial located at 1588 Old Hot Springs Road, APN 008-123-23, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of the approval contained in the staff report.
Motion made by Mr. Owens for approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Eswin. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any nays? Motion carried unanimously.
Mr. Chairman? Since there was some discussion on this particular item, I would like to note the appeal process on this item, just for the record and for the applicant and any members that have participated in this discussion this evening. This is the final decision on this special use permit. Unless an application to appeal is filed with the Planning Division within 10 days, any such appeal would go to the Board of Supervisors, and you'd contact the Planning Division office for information on how to, on making that appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Plummel. Appreciate the information.
That was trying to cut.
Okay. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. We have two items that we're going to address together, both F-4A and F-4B. F-4A, SUP-15-012, to consider request from Five Seat Investments LLC, property owner Tim McCarville LLC, to allow a medical marijuana cultivation facility on property zone general industrial located at 8001 Highway 50 East, APN 008-611-39. And F-4B, SUP-15-013, to consider request from Five Seat Investments LLC, property owner Tim McCarville LLC, to allow a medical marijuana production facility on property zone general industrial located at 8001 Highway 50 East, APN 008-611-39. Ms. Pansky?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you had mentioned, this is two separate applications for medical marijuana facilities at the same location, one for a cultivation facility and one for a production facility. This project is located at 8001 Highway 50 East, which is just about as close to the county line as you can get, as I have shown in this aerial here. For those that aren't familiar, to the south of the property is Pick 'n Pull. And then to the north is the alignment of the VNT Railway. Currently occupying this property is the Carson Used Tire and Wheel. They are, if you've driven by, still on the property, but the applicant is currently in the process of finalizing their lease for this use. And they will be proposing some modifications to the exterior of the building, as well as to the site, to accommodate their proposal. And just a couple other photos of what the site currently looks like today. It is fenced as well at the right-of-way. So the existing building's about 3,100 square feet, just a little bit over the applicant's proposing for the production side, an addition of about 1,500 square feet for just under 5,000 square feet total. So the cultivation would go in the existing portion of the building. The production would go in the new portion of the building. And on the site plan that I have up for you now, the shaded area is the existing building, and then the addition is the, just to the southwest. The applicant is proposing, and this would be a requirement regardless, that from the existing private road or private driveway, they would pave the project, pave the parking lot and the entrance. Right now, it's kind of paved in very poor condition, but they would propose to do that as well. And they've also proposed to provide landscaping along the frontage in front of the building itself. As you can see, the parcel is quite large. the frontage in front of the building itself. As you can see, the parcel is quite large. And given the fact that the building is pretty close to the right-of-way and tucked up on one corner, we didn't feel that it was appropriate, also because of what's surrounding the property, to have them landscape the frontage of the entire parcel, like we did on the previous one. So what we're proposing is fencing, I'm sorry, landscaping, basically within the boundary of the fence. They'll be landscaping along the frontage here, and then adjacent to the driveway area, as you are moving up to it. The cultivation facility, again, growing of the marijuana. The production facility, in this case, this applicant is proposing extraction. That's really going to be the majority of what they're going to be doing on the site. They won't be creating or producing edible products or lotions or anything like that. It's really going to be more the extraction process from the plant itself, and then putting it into a capsulated form that they could then sell to the dispensaries. And I'm not sure the applicant could probably tell you if those capsules could potentially be used for other production products at another facility. They're just not proposing to do that at this one. There are several windows that are located on the building currently, and this first set of elevations kind of depicts what the side where the cultivation is going to go. So you can see the dashed line around it that shows basically the cultivation part of the facility. There are several windows that they're going to be blocking in for security purposes, and just, you know, the nature of the business really doesn't make these windows necessary. So they're proposing to block them in, and the staff actually has recommended a condition of approval that while we don't have a problem with that happening, we do have a concern about a large expanse of basically just block wall. So we will require them at their building permit stage to provide some articulation and architecture to make it look a little bit nicer. And then the elevations of the production side, which is, again, located at the southwest corner, much smaller, but basically the exact same elevation that we just looked at with the other area highlighted instead. And then a rendering of what the building will look like in its currently proposed form. So when it comes to your building permit stage, it'll end up looking a little bit different from this, but this is the general gist of what the building would look like, with the cultivation entrance being here, the production entrance being here. And then floor plans, these are actually backwards, but north is actually up to the right corner. The production facility is on the left here. This is the cultivation facility on the right. There are several bloom chambers, a drying room, a trimming and packaging room, a vegetation room, staff offices as well. And then the production side has a loading, receiving area, a water treatment area, vault, and a storage cleanup area, and then their largest piece, which is their processing area here. So they have met all the requirements for the development standards for medical marijuana. They meet the distancing requirements as well, and they have received a provisional certificate at this site for both of their special use permits. So staff is recommending approval of both with the conditions of approval that are outlined in their report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Mr. Sadler, you have a question, Ms. Pansky?
So looking at the picture of the Carson Tire, they're obviously going to have to re-brick in where the large door is for the garage doors or whatever, as well?
Yes, that's correct.
They're going to redo the whole front or match up the front?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other questions, Ms. Pansky?
Is there interior access between the two facilities?
Interior access?
Yes.
There is, and it's actually right here.
Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Pansky? Let's have the applicant come forward. Please identify yourself for the record.
Commissioners, Chris Baker with Manheart Consulting for the record.
How do you spell your last name, sir?
Baker, B-A-K-E-R.
Thank you. All right, sir, you heard the testimony provided by Ms. Pansky, and if you had an opportunity to read, I'm sure you had to read the applications and the conditions of approval?
I have.
Do you agree with all, with what Ms. Pansky said and the conditions of approval?
I do.
We'll allow you an opportunity to contribute to that testimony, if you like.
Yeah, just a couple things. First of all, I'd like to thank Susan for her overview. It makes my job a lot easier. I've had the pleasure of being here for a few of these cultivation, production SUPs, and obviously, the hot button and key issue here is compatibility of land uses. I think the applicant's done a great job here. They tried to get it all the way out of the county, but they came really close. And as you can tell, you've got, you've got industrial uses surrounding the site. You've got a very large parcel with the setbacks detailed in the staff report, and we've got 100 feet, 200 feet, and 300 feet in some areas. You know, they're taking an existing building and repurposing it, and I think overall, it is a logical use of this facility and this site. So with that, I'm also joined tonight by Dan Flanagan, who's the construction manager for the facility, and Steve Miles, who's the project architect. So collectively, I think we'll do our best to answer any questions you may have.
All right, sir. I want to wait just a minute. Commission members have any questions? Mr. Baker?
Would you object, even though it's not being asked for by the Planning Commission, by Planning Department, to do some landscaping on the frontage?
We actually are doing some landscaping.
You will be doing?
Yeah, there is. There's a landscape plan in the application. It's tough to see in that one because it's actually immediately adjacent to the roadway.
Okay.
And then immediately adjacent to the drive aisle.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, there will be landscaping.
Okay. Mr. Sadler, you have a question, Mr. Baker?
Mrs. Pansky mentioned the capsules you're going to be producing or something. I think that's the first we've heard of that, of any of these plants coming.
Yeah, and, you know, I'm not intimately familiar with what's going on. Obviously, I've done a lot of educating of myself here on the process of the facility. To my understanding, yes, they will be extracting the oils and producing like a gel cap, which will be sold to other facilities and transported off-site for use in other edibles and other things. But they will not be, like mentioned by Ms. Pansky, they will not be producing any edibles, oils of any such nature on site.
Very interesting. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, Mr. Baker? Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
And we allow any member of the public to approach the podium, provide any testimony regarding this application. Let it be noted for the record that there's no indication of the public wanting to address this application. We'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion, comments, motion?
Make a motion. You want them together?
Make the motion separate.
Okay. Ready to make a motion, recommend a motion. I move to approve SUP-15-012, a special use permit request for Five SEAT Investment LLC, property owner Tim McCarville LLC, to allow a medical marijuana cultivation facility on property zone General Industrial located at 8001 Highway 50 East, APN 008-611-39, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
The motion made by Mr. Sadler for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Mr. Eswin, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any nays? Motion carried unanimously. I'm ready for the other one. Mr. Sadler?
Again, recommended motion. I move to approve SUP-15-012, a special use permit request for Five SEAT Investment LLC, property owner Tim McCarville LLC, to allow a medical marijuana production facility on property zone General Industrial located at 8001 Highway 50 East, APN 008-611-39, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
There's been a motion for approval by Mr. Sadler. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Eswin. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any nays? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. These are, sir, these are really expensive, I'm sure. You're welcome to them. We're just going to file them in number 13.
Do you want these first?
No, I don't.
You don't want them?
No, I don't.
Nope?
Okay.
All righty.
Save three.
Okay.
Put the bandages on.
Let's give one to the reporter. Okay, next item on the agenda, staff reports. Mr. Plummel?
Thank you. I've got a couple items to cover. There were no, at the Board of Supervisors in the last month, there were no items previously, nor new items previously before the Board of Planning Commission that went to the Board of Supervisors in March, so there's nothing to report there. In April, last time I mentioned, so regarding the downtown project, and I think as I reported the last time, the consultant design team had just been approved by the Board of Supervisors and onboard, and had a tentative date. So I think we, April 20th is the first day. So we firmed up the first theming work, public workshop is April 20th. It'll be in this building. Haven't tied down the details of time, but, so we'll send out more information.
Evening, lunch, maybe?
It'll be a lunch, oh, it is, okay. Lunch, and then after-work evening session here to, and the purpose of this, this first workshop is not, it's not going to be to a design level, but it is going to be the first, it's being called a theming workshop, so it's going to be kind of the, what's the flavor of the whole thing going to be, looking at samples of materials, colors, and those types of things. Still working out the details of what's going to be shown on that. For, we have more agenda items for next month that I'll be working on without Susan's help, as Susan goes on maternity leave into next month.
When do we see you again, Susan?
Probably you'll see me at the June meeting.
Oh.
But don't hold me to that yet.
She hasn't had a screaming baby yet, but...
Yeah, we'll see.
We do, yeah, on the April agenda, we have a number, a couple more MME facilities, probably the last couple ones that we'll see from the list of approved MMEs by the state. Two growth management applications for water usage for new car washes being built, some development going on there. Residential special use permit for detached garage accessory structure size, and a variance related to boundary line adjustment for non-conforming lot size. So, and we anticipate keeping you busy through the summer, actually, with kind of the things that we're kind of getting, getting talked about and tentatively coming, and people are discussing with us for development. So we think, we think we'll continue to have applications into the summer, keeping you busy with some good projects coming forward. The last thing I want to mention, obviously, you all know about our, we're missing a planning commissioner. We're down to six planning commissioners, unfortunately, with the passing of Mr. Dami, who was a planning commissioner for almost six years here in Carson City. I had the opportunity, pleasure to go to, that's the wrong term, but, sorry, his memorial on last Saturday. It was, it was nice to hear his, four of his grandchildren spoke and spoke about Mr. Dami, and so I think, you know, all of you that knew him, and his smile and his attitude about everything, he was like that with everybody, apparently. So it was really nice to hear, even from his grandkids, how he was and how he lived his life, and so we're sorry to, we're sorry to see him pass, and I'll pass his, our thoughts on to his family for y'all. But I'll conclude with that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Plummel.
Couple things. We have an ethics meeting, 1:30 tomorrow here, correct?
Yep, I could have, could have mentioned that, yeah, for any, and there's the ethics training, and, you know, I know, I know a lot of you have gone through this before. There's always some new things. I think they'll, they'll cover a little bit more about electronic communications and how that relates to the open meeting.
Plus, with the new DA, there might be a different...
New DA, yeah. They're always interesting.
Presentation, whatever.
Yeah, you know, if you've, if you've gone to it before, it's not mandatory. You probably have a pretty good handle on it, but if you get a chance, I like going to them occasionally myself. I have other commitments tomorrow, and I won't be here, but if you have a chance, I'd encourage you to go. Thanks for reminding.
Another thing, Lee, we still have not had the other dispensary come forward for Carson City yet, or has it been, I mean, we don't know who it is who have been approved yet, or they have an aspirant application?
It's, what's the right terminology for that? We, it's not, it's not public record. We're not, we're not at liberty to disclose that information per the, yet, per the nondisclosure clause in confidentiality.
And is there, this may be, for these places, because the one we approved already is grow, produce, and dispense, and we're approving all these others. Is there state terms or legalities for how it's transported, if they're going to be shipping this to other areas or something, or?
It's my understanding, although I don't have a lot of information on it, that the state does have specific requirements on the transportation, yeah. From our standpoint, you know, we're aware that they can cross county lines, and they're just not allowed to cross state lines, essentially.
Because in theory, like Nevada Organics is an all-in-one process. The possibility, we don't know who it is yet, it could also be the same for the other one, then these other dispensary, or growers and that, will have, really, to take it elsewhere or do something else with it. So we could become like a growth center for, I mean, they could ship it to Vegas, they could go into Reno, anywhere they want.
Yes, that's correct, and I would assume, given the fact that Carson City only has two dispensaries allotted to us, that the number of cultivation facilities that we're seeing come through, assuming that they all move forward with development, are going to have to export to other counties and other dispensaries in the state.
So again, we could become like a growth center for those areas, yeah?
Are there any other comments, questions, or reports by any of the commission members for the record?
All right.
There not being any, I'm prepared to receive a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion for adjournment by Mr. Eswin, second by Mr. Sadler. All in favor?
Aye.
It would appear to be unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.